Okay, uh, please.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Roll call, please.
Mrs. Bottalato. Mr. Pico.
Yes.
Mr. Velardo.
Yes.
Mr. Yagnon.
Here.
Mrs. Harrell.
Yes.
Mrs. Sharpestein.
Here.
We have a call.
Thank you. Uh, sunshine law, this is to advise the general public and to instruct that it be recorded in the minutes that in compliance with chapter two thirty-one of the public laws of nineteen seventy-five entitled the Open Public Meetings Act, Stanhope Board of Education located at twenty-four Valley Road, Stanhope, New Jersey, has caused this notice to be posted at the office of the Stanhope Board of Education, mailed to the New Jersey Herald, the municipal clerk of the borough of Stanhope, the Stanhope Post Office, and posted at the Valley Road School and on the Stanhope Public Schools website, setting forth the time, date, and location of the meeting. The Stanhope School District, in partnership with the community, commits to provide a quality, comprehensive education for all learners with equal emphasis on academic excellence and citizenship through values, respect, and service. Our vision is to inspire and cultivate a community of innovative, curious, compassionate, and globally-minded learners equipped with knowledge, problem-solving skills, and the ability to persevere to make a positive impact on society and shape a better future. An executive session will be held for the purpose of student activities. Formal action may be taken. And with that, we go to presentations.
Okay, um, good evening, everybody. I have the school self-assessment for determining grades from twenty-four, twenty-five. If you remember, it was maybe just a meeting ago that we were approving the actual grades from the twenty-three, twenty-four, uh, school year. So what happens is, uh, we submit a self-assessment, um, through eight core elements of harassment, intimidation, bullying. Uh, some of it pertains to trainings that we provide, supports that we provide to students, and a lot of it is the, uh, the procedural investigations that we conduct, um, throughout the school year. In those eight core elements, um, you are awarding yourself a certain number of points, typically from zero through three. For the twenty-three, twenty-four school year, we self-assessed and ultimately scored at seventy-seven points out of seventy-eight. Uh, for this year, we submitted, um, a score of seventy-eight out of seventy-eight. The one-point difference, you might be wondering, is what changed? Uh, and the one piece that, that was the most significant change from, um, la- the previous year to this year was that we actually had the prosecutor's office in last year, uh, with, with, um, several of the officers who spoke with the kids about the importance of, uh, cybersecurity and cyber safety. Um, you know, the, the things that you would expect, you know, making sure they understand being safe on social media, you know, even if, if you send something and delete it, it doesn't make it go away. I believe we had the forensic e- expert here who kind of spoke a little bit about that as well. So really, no real difference from, from any other year, uh, that we've submitted other than yet. That, um, happy to answer any questions anybody has.
Okay.
Thank you.
Moving on.
Okay, uh, for my report, I'm happy to, to share that so far this school year, within the last month since our last meeting, we've had zero suspensions and zero HIB investigations. Just wanted to highlight the opening of school. Uh, it's, it's always, um, it's always a rush, uh, for administration. It's a rush for us to be prepared for our teachers and staff to come in. That was August twenty-six, twenty-seven. Um, we had the four-day Labor Day weekend, and then there we had the other rush, uh, for when our students came back. That was more of a rush for our teachers as, as Ms. D and I kind of sat back and just kind of assisted as we needed to. The kids seemed really happy to be back, uh, excited to see the, the upgrades that we've made to the music room and to the science classroom at the middle school level. We have quite a few new staff members this year, uh, that I know there was a little apprehension from our middle school kids coming in, not knowing their math teachers. Um, but within, honestly, a day or two, they seem to have settled in, and, and I've heard nothing but positive things, not just, you know, from a, from a personality perspective, uh, but the kids are up and they're moving and, and they're doing math and, and they're being challenged. And, um, I think at first that was a little strange for them, um, you know, especially having that double block of math. Uh, but, you know, all, all seems really good. Jumping, I'm gonna jump ahead, uh, only because I'm talking about staffing in terms of a staffing update. Aside from paraprofessional staff, uh, we are, uh, one hundred percent, um, staffed in all of our certificated positions and custodial position, sorry, one part-time custodial position that we're currently filling through, uh, substitutes, um, but that's working okay. We have several paraprofessional vacancies still, uh, and you'll see we've had several resignations, um, since our last meeting that, that are reflected in the, uh, in the agenda. So I just wanted to bring that to everybody's attention. Um, back-to-school night was very well attended despite, uh, a conflict, I understand, with a mandatory soccer, uh, meeting for a lot of our parents who are, are involved in that program. But I applaud the parents who went to soccer and then quickly came back and made sure to get into, uh, classrooms with, with their, their children's teachers. As we have been doing for several years, we provided, uh, the initial, um, back-to-school night experience for our elementary, our preschool through fifth-grade parents, uh, where we did an administrative presentation, and then they had two sessions, two opportunities in case they have multiple children in K-five, pre-K to five, uh, where they were able to see their, their students' classrooms and their, and meet their teachers. Uh, and that was followed by another administrative presentation for the parents of middle school students. Uh, and then they then, the parents then followed their children's schedule periods one through nine, uh, and had the opportunity to meet their teachers. So it was a really nice, um, really nice event. It was great to catch up with so many of the parents that you don't see throughout the summer and the families. Uh, and I want to thank the, the, the quote-unquote vendors, the people who came out from our community, uh, to show the, the services that are available for parents and for students should they need it. Center for Prevention, uh, Ginny's House, Stanhope HSA, uh, Lenape Valley came down, um, and had some pamphlets and flyers available for, for parents who are, um, eventually transitioning their kids up through high school. And then the last, uh, item that I have is that there was, uh, now an official posting for the board vacancy. Once Mr. Iftikhar, uh, submitted his resignation and the board approved, uh, the board now has sixty-five days to fill that, um, position. Uh, first step was to advertise for it, and, um, as of today, I, I don't have any applicants, and as soon as I do, I will make sure that the board is updated.
Thank you. All right, that brings us to Personnel, Curriculum, School, Climate, and Culture Committee Meeting. Matt was not there, so I think that is me. Just very quickly, everything we talked about in that meeting is reflected on the agenda, and Mr. Hagman alluded to that already with a couple of resignations, um, in terms of staffing, uh, but that is all reflected in the agenda, and I don't think there was anything else in that meeting.
There's not, and I just, I do want to make a point, just, just to reassure everybody. Although we, we have vacancies and we are short-staffed, we, we have people in these positions. Uh, we have very, um, talented and dedicated substitutes who are filling these positions for us. So right now, we're okay. Where we're gonna run into issues is cold and flu season. Once we start having people call out, our subpool is already here, and that's where we're going to start having our issues. Teacher calls out, paraprofessional calls out, and we don't have anybody available to come and, and cover them. So right now, we're covered. Students are not, they're all supported, um, we're not, you know, in, out of compliance with IEPs. I just wanted to just make a point to make sure that everybody understood that.
Thank you. Any questions? Okay, moving on, Business Services.
Scoring off the agenda as well, so we had some fun stuff. Number-one school audit has begun, I believe, and it should only take about two days. Uh, food services, there's a new POS system, point-of-sale, which should also be a little bit friendlier for the parents. Another exciting thing, Coaches Association. At a minimal expense, we're looking to join a coach association that's gonna open up opportunities for easier scheduling and, um, just more opportunities for our kids, uh, and predominantly, and I believe it was in track and field, yeah. In terms of facilities, uh, door projects, about ninety-eight percent done. Uh, there's a couple minor, minor hiccups.
I do have an update. Uh, they'll be tomorrow, three o'clock, uh, to repair the doors that aren't functioning properly and assess a couple other minor things that we have going on. So we're hopeful that all ninety-nine point five percent complete. I'm sorry, Friday, Friday at three o'clock.
Cool thing is, back to school, and then I asked some teachers what they think of it, and they all like it. So they didn't know how I was, which was good. Science lab looks great. I had a chance to look through, excited to see. Yeah. Parking lot was a bit more of an in-depth discussion, and I'm sure Mr. Hagman's gonna wanna talk about it, but, you know, there is some feedback in regards to the beginning of the school year. There's more cars, more people. It has felt a little bit better this week from my perspective, but everyone has their own. There are long-term plans on beginning the process of seeing what we would need to do to get a parking lot here, or an additional parking lot, and I'll let Steve speak on that.
Yeah, I can elaborate a little bit, and, and, um, right now, we're, we're in hypothetical stage. There are no plans. We haven't conducted any surveys. We're, we're simply in discussion, um, at the board level and, uh, with our architect. One of the reasons we are continually having, uh, issues with our parking lot is that we have more staff than we ever had. Having more students is one thing, more cars coming through, that definitely contributes to it, uh, but when you have more staff, you're eating up more parking spaces. Uh, at the, at the highest point of our day, where we have all of our people here, if you walk through, you're probably looking at only four or five vacant parking spaces. That said, we're exploring, um, the, the possibility of creating an additional parking lot behind our school at that lower field, um, while also attempting to maintain, uh, the field down there so that we can continue to, to provide that, um, for our, our football teams, lacrosse teams, soccer teams, anybody who's looking, um, you know, to, to find green grass, uh, where they can support their kids. So like I said, we don't have drawings yet. I know that there's probably gonna be some questions about residents, especially down there. I do think that, that, um, aside from benefiting the school, there, there's potential that it can benefit the town as well. Uh, right now, when, when there's activities down on that field, most people are parking on the street. They're doing curbside parking all throughout that, that cul-de-sac. Um, if we can allow people to park in a, a proposed new parking lot, then that would clean up potential traffic on that street, uh, people wouldn't be parking in front of homes. So we have, uh, a long ways to go, but I feel strongly that we need to begin the process right now, uh, and the architect is, is working on getting a surveyor out to, to get us at least some more information.
Yeah, I think it's important to set reasonable expectations. These type of projects take time, especially when it's being done right, so it's very much in its infancy, but hopefully sooner rather than later, um, we're able to get it done, 'cause I know that'd be welcomed. The, the biggest thing for me was, uh, the future where we're going with the, uh, the board, uh, the BA position. From speaking to Steve, they're being very proactive on it, and I feel like there's really strong plan. I'm not gonna dive too much into, uh, the details, but it is nice knowing that there is a plan in place, and they're just really trying to get ahead of it before we run out of time. So, that's it.
Questions?
Is there any possibility that those sport programs could utilize the, uh, field, the fields over at the Lenape Ball Fields?
At the high school?
No, no, well, before the high school, the, the.
Lakeland Little League?
Lakeland Little League fields.
Yeah, um, to my, to my knowledge, some are using it. I know I've attended some youth events up there. Uh, my nephew's played up there, um, against the Lakeland Little League, but I don't know how much they're using up there.
Yeah, my understanding is those fields are owned by Lakeland Little League, which is a different entity. It's not the town or the schools.
That's a nice open area. Some towns do use their ball fields that they're not playing baseball or anything.
But these aren't town fields, so I think that's the issue there. They'd have to go through Lakeland in their organization, but yeah, absolutely.
Yeah. That's it.
Okay. Uh, moving on, Policy and Communications.
Most of what we talked about, if not all of what we talked about, is on tonight's agenda. There's a lot of first-read policies. I don't know if anybody had a chance to look through them. I know you all sit home just waiting to read all the policy in your spare time. Uh, the abolishment of the three items that are on here were all COVID-related, so there's really just not a reason to have them sitting in policy any longer. Nothing of any great importance is being removed. And if you haven't had a chance to go through all the first reads, you can do that this month, 'cause then there's a second read next month.
I can't remember if I sent, uh, the update to the committee members. There was a question on the choice school policy. Did I send that out to you?
You did.
Uh, it was, it was a typo from Strauss Esme.
That makes a lot of sense.
And I don't, it was something that was alarming, but it is a non-factor, so.
And it didn't affect us, but it was about choice schools in general, so we just got clarity.
Could have affected us, but it wasn't.
If somebody, if it was practice, if somebody had chosen to go someplace else.
We would have been on the hook for it. It was a typo. It was addressed.
Okay, excellent. Any other questions on policy? Okay, that would bring us to Ed Services.
There was not a meeting this past month.
There was not a meeting in September, because the August meeting that Jen so graciously attended for me, um, was so close to the September meeting.
Okay.
That, that said, Avery's name can go back on here now for the next meeting.
Jen doesn't wanna go back.
That's not true. I said I would go back when you're not available. I have all the confidence in the world that you are available for the next one.
Okay, uh, as far as Board President's Report, not much, just a reminder, school boards is coming up for those of us who are going, uh, a couple of weeks, so that should be a good presentation there. Um, and then with regard to the Steering Committee for Regionalization, Carmen has volunteered to be our, our additional person on that. There are no meetings scheduled yet. I did see an email come through today that they are beginning to look at when we can set one up, um, because, uh, our contact with the Policy Center at Rowan has reached out to us. So as soon as I know more, you'll know more. Okay? And that is all I have. That would bring us to public session, but seeing no public, I think we can move past that. Travel and Workshop Reports, there was one. Mr. Hagman?
It was, uh, it was refreshing to go to an in-person workshop again, uh, down in, in Monroe, uh, something I probably did every couple months before COVID, uh, and I haven't been back since. You're talking several years. Uh, so it was nice to, to see some people I haven't seen in a while. Uh, the focus here was on, um, artificial intelligence, uh, its impact on schools, the effect, the positive effect it could have on educators, um, and, and some of the tools that are available to us. Uh, you know, my, my core takeaways are that just when you think you have a really firm understanding and grasp, you're, you're automatically now behind, and you need to catch back up. Uh, I, I, I will admittedly say that I have, um, begun my own use of, of artificial intelligence to kind of streamline workflow, um, you know, and, and I will begin incorporating it a little bit into, into the trainings that we provide for our staff. Uh, one of the courses that, that I'm taking currently at Centenary is in the area of technology, and, um, our capstone project is to at least investigate, um, uh, technology that you'd like to, to bring to your district, and, uh, I'm looking into some of the school-built artificial intelligence platforms. Not to say that we're going to bring something in, but at the very least, I'd like to have a better understanding, uh, and as part of the project, I'm hoping to complete that template and, and move forward with some policies so that we can, I can, I can dedicate some research into that towards the course, and, uh, the, the district will have a direct, um, impact from there, so.
Very much needed, so that's great.
So if you hear me talking AI, it's, uh, it's not just because I have to for my courses. Uh, Chris has seen me get excited a couple times when I upload a document and a sixty-page document, and I say, "Hey, find this," and within thirty seconds, I know exactly what paragraph and page and, and all that stuff, so, uh, it can definitely be useful.
Good. Questions, comments? All right, that would bring us two minutes for approval, items one through four below. Can I have a motion, please?
So moved.
Second, please?
Second.
All right, this is a voice vote. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any noes? Abstentions?
I think I have to abstain from one, two.
Okay.
Um, I have to abstain for all four.
Thank you. We still good, okay. And it counts, we're still good. All right, Administrative Action Items, can I have a motion, please?
Motion.
Second, please. Thank you. We have items one through six. Give everybody a minute to take a look. Board goals on there?
Yes. For like, uh, number three and four, the Insight Health for the, uh, substance abuse, is that like, does that take place of like, dare programs, or what is that all about?
Insight Health is an organization that provides, uh, in, in this case, it'll provide professional development opportunities for staff. It will provide, um, resources should any of our students need, or, or we need to have them go out for mental health support, um, uh, risk assessment clearances. In the past, if we've done an internal risk assessment and I identified a child as, you know, either, um, in danger of hurting themselves or hurting others, and we need to have him go out for an eval, uh, the district is on the hook to pay for that assessment, um, which we're always happy to do if it's in the best interest of the students. So the Sussex County Department of Health, however, um, obtained a three-year grant so that we can have this service provided to us for free for three years. Uh, so child A, for whatever reason, needs, uh, some sort of an assessment or needs to speak to a mental health professional, we can arrange it through them, they're local, and the family has access to it for free, and then they can further assess what needs they, they have from there. Until we have board approval, hopefully tonight, uh, we haven't been able to utilize the program yet. I'm hoping we don't have to use it a lot, but when we do, it looks like this will be a pretty reputable program to support us.
Thank you.
And you mentioned, did you say four also?
It was part of it.
Well, it was part of it. Yeah, I mean, I know the data, it's the school's data. It seems like I was just didn't know I was.
Yep. Any other discussion? Okay, roll call vote, please.
Mrs. Bottalato?
Yes.
Mr. Pico?
Yes.
Mr. Velardo?
Yes.
Mr. Yagnon?
Yes.
Mrs. Harrell?
Yes.
Mrs. Sharpestein?
Yes.
Motion's carried.
Thank you. Uh, Policy Action Items, one through three, can I have a motion, please?
Motion.
Second, please?
Second.
Thank you. See here, Policy Action Items, give everyone a minute there.
I did have a question, and I, I apologize. I tried to see prior to the meeting if there was a detachment, I can find it. Um, for remote learning options for families, I'm not really familiar with what that is. Could somebody just? It was, it was a COVID-driven policy. That's no longer applicable. So even, even if we wanted to provide remote learning options, the state of, the Department of Education won't approve it.
You kind of led to where my brain was going, okay, thank you.
Not yet, at least.
Any other questions or discussion?
Just pointing out that the first one, zero, one, four, three is timely in that we currently have a vacancy. It's, it speaks to all of the, the procedural, um, the procedures that we need to follow to fill the vacancy.
Roll call vote, please.
Mrs. Bottalato?
Yes.
Mr. Pico?
Yes.
Mr. Velardo?
Yes.
Mr. Yagnon?
Yes.
Mrs. Harrell?
Yes.
Mrs. Sharpestein?
Yes.
Motion's carried.
Thank you. Education Action Items, one through three, can I have a motion, please?
Motion.
Second? Any discussion?
Actually, I just had one question. The cross-country team, I know it's new this year. Did you, did you guys have a good turnout for it, considering it was a new sport?
Um, I, I think we have between ten and twelve kids, uh, and I only know that because I see them running and training, uh, outside my window and, and sometimes when I leave for the day. Uh, it's, it's a nice group of kids. Hopefully, we can have, um, several, um, meets for them, uh, but similar to track, I think the first year is gonna be a slow rollout, uh, and I expect our, our track season to be, um, more plentiful in terms of meets and tournaments. And one of the reasons why we wanted to join the, the Greater Morris County Junior School Coaches Association, um, through there, we'll get contact information from coaches all through Morris County and Sussex County so that we can make those connections.
Okay, thank you.
But yeah, it's been a nice turnout, and it's nice to see that. I mean, the weather's been perfect for it, which is great.
Roll call vote, please.
Sure. Mrs. Bottalato?
Yes.
Mr. Pico?
Yes.
Mr. Velardo?
Yes.
Mr. Yagnon?
Yes.
Mrs. Harrell?
Yes.
Mrs. Sharpestein?
Yes.
Thank you.
Personnel Action Items, one through eight, addendum item number nine, can I have a motion, please?
Motion.
Second.
Thank you. Okay, give everyone a minute.
Wanted to mention number seven, I'm gonna ask that we strike.
Okay.
I never, hadn't heard back from the employees since the initial conversation of employment.
Okay.
The number seven, I'm gonna be looking to strike that.
Okay, thank you. Any other comments or questions? Okay, roll call vote, please.
Mrs. Bottalato?
Yes.
Mr. Pico?
Yes.
Mr. Velardo?
Yes.
Mr. Yagnum?
Yes.
Mrs. Harold?
Yes.
Mrs. Sharpestein?
Yes.
Motion's carried.
Thank you. Business Services Action Items, one through 12, can I have a motion, please?
Motion.
Second.
Thank you. Give everyone a minute.
Quick question on number one. When I opened the attachment and kind of just sifting through, Debbie's signature was on the way bottom of that.
Debbie's name is on the bottom of our full report only because of what we were looking at, where she was and where Dan was. So we just have to update that system. I only actually noticed it on this one.
Okay.
Yes, so I'll make sure that gets updated before it goes to the county office.
Thank you.
That's a good catch.
Yeah. Any other discussion? Give another minute. No? Okay, can I have a roll call vote, please?
Mrs. Bottalato?
Yes.
Mr. Pico?
Yes.
Mr. Velardo?
Yes.
Mr. Yagnum?
Yes.
Mrs. Harold?
Yes.
Mrs. Sharpestein?
Yes.
Motion's carried.
Thank you. Brings us to New Business. Anybody have any new business they'd like to bring up? Old Business?
I have a question. I thought it'd be appropriately placed. How's preschool going? How's our new partnership? Any feedback from?
They're collaborative with us. I haven't yet been down while preschool was in session. We were supposed to go this morning. We had to delay. We, our preschool instructional coach who we contract from Ed Services, we're going to go next Wednesday to meet the teachers before school, introduce them to Naomi, who's the pick, and have an opportunity to just kind of see things in session. I know that they have some construction going on down there. They were hoping to have additional classrooms ready.
Mountain's next to me right now. It's very exciting.
Clearly not ready, but my understanding is that the facilities.
Then they got approval for the additional work, the addition to the school.
So.
Right now, they have like temporary classrooms, like the trailers that they brought in that was before the end of August. And now they've started the work. It's very exciting. Bulldogs, there's escalators.
I've heard from, I've heard from one parent for students who are registered down there. We sorted through some of the issues that they had without going into specific details. I don't, I honestly don't think a lot of them were for any cause of concern of mine. Happy to discuss with the board offline if you have specific questions about that, but I think it's going pretty well. Our programs are great. It's great to see. It's amazing to see the three-year-olds turn into four-year-olds and the four-year-olds go to kindergarten. I mean, considering these kids, this school year is 25% of their life. They grow by leaps and bounds and it's really exciting. And we have our first state observations, assessments coming in next week, which I'm not nervous about. I don't know about our teachers. I think that they're doing just fine. But we haven't had anybody come in in the last year and a half that we've been running this program. Thank you for asking, though. I think it's, I think it's going well.
I know firsthand, we have great educators here. I saw exactly what you were saying last year, so.
I have one more item, just only because we've brought it up before and it's kind of hasn't gone anywhere yet. Last year, I mentioned that I had a group of students, third grade at the time, that were interested in creating a run club for our male students. We have Girls on the Run for three, five females. We have Heart and Soul for our middle school females. And I had known about a program called Hero Boys only because my son participated in it when he was in third grade before COVID. So I reached out, bless you. I hadn't heard back. Almost a month went by, I hadn't heard back, and then I found a contact from way back when my son participated. He's a sophomore now, by the way, and he did it in third grade. And I was able to connect and she got me to the right person. And I think the reason there was such a holdup is because there's no more, there are no more Hero Boy charters left in Sussex County or Morris County or anywhere in our area. But they're very, very excited about the possibility of Stanhope hopefully getting things going again. So if you're familiar with Girls on the Run, it's very similar to that. It's boys primarily three through five. The hardest thing is going to be able to find coaches. That's always the issue. It can be volunteers, you know, so if we can't find anybody within our staff, I may be putting it out to the community. One of the reasons why I wanted to share it out now. The only thing that we would require is a subster, which isn't difficult to obtain. But I want to start the process sooner so that we're not, we're not fighting to find people in the spring when we look to do this. So it's pretty exciting. The Hero Boys theme is, I think it's, I want to say it's eight or 10 weeks. And for the majority of the weeks, part of the program is identifying local heroes to speak to the boys to build character. They're looking for former military, police officers, you know, those that work in the medical field. Again, give the kids the opportunity to learn about ways that they can give back to their community and be a hero for the community is kind of what their message is. So hopefully, I'll have more information on that pretty soon.
Thank you.
Real quick, one more old business. I know that you didn't have any interest from the eighth graders as far as board liaison. Have we thought about maybe opening it up to seventh or sixth?
I think I put it out to all three grade levels at the end of, not the end of last year, mid-year, and I didn't have any interest. I'm happy to put it out again this year. Student Council elections are next week, so once that dust settles, I'll give it another shot.
Thank you. That would bring us to Public Session Number Two. No public has joined us. So that will bring us to our executive session. Can I have a motion, please?
Motion.
Thank you. Be it resolved, Stanhope Board of Education adopts the following resolution. Whereas the Open Public Meeting Act, Chapter 231 of 1975, permits the exclusion of the public from a meeting in certain circumstances. And whereas the Stanhope Board of Education is of the opinion that such circumstances presently exist, now therefore be it resolved by the Stanhope Board of Education, County of Sussex and State of New Jersey, that a closed session of this Board of Education where the public shall be excluded will be held at this time for the purpose of student activities. Be it further resolved that the action of the Board with regard to the above entitled matter shall be disclosed to the public at a later date to the extent that the same is not prejudicial to the interests of the parties involved and would not result in a possible invasion of their right to privacy. Voice vote, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Noes? Abstentions? Okay.
Okay, can I have a motion to reenter public session?
Motion.
Second please.
Second.
Thank you. Voice vote, all in favor?
Aye.
Any noes? Abstentions? That brings us to adjournment. Can I have a motion for adjournment?
Motion.
Second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you very much. That closes us out. Thank you.